Okay, very good. We'll call an order and if you'd please join us in prayer and pledge. Commissioner.
Thank you, dear Lord. We just want to praise you for this day. Let me quote Jeremiah seventeen, seven and eight. "But blessed is the one who trusts in the Lord, whose confidence is in him; they will be like a tree planted by the water, that sends out its root by this tree." So, Lord, we just take up all our stress. We leave it on the altar today as Board of Commissioners that we be able to make a good decision today, make many more other good decisions with our agendas. And we leave everybody in your hands. Thank you for bringing everybody here in the public and safely in this rainy day. And we praise you, Almighty God, for all the strength you've given us today. Help us perform on our duties loyally, with honor and integrity. Thank you, dear Lord, for your grace, which is sufficient for us. We ask in your heavenly and precious name. Let's gather together for the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First call out to the public. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning. Just I gave you a copy of a postcard that we're sending out for our tax foreclosure auction. Because of COVID-19, we're doing it online this year. This will be kind of interesting because we've never done that before. So it's through bidcor.com, which is a state kind of auction website. And the bidding begins on Friday, September 25th at 9:00 a.m. and closes on September 30th at 3:00. So just wanted to give that commercial. Thank you.
Thanks.
Interesting. We'll see how it works out. Okay. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time? We're still in public comment. But go ahead, Derek.
I have a resolution here that I was hoping I could give you guys today. I know it's last minute. But the CDBG cares funds requires a public hearing in order that you get access to those dollars. And I was hoping we could have a public hearing on the 22nd as part of your meeting to satisfy this requirement. So I wrote a resolution to approve a public hearing on the 22nd. So I don't know if you have any questions. Do we need two public hearings? Eventually, yes. But they have to be at different stages in the project. So I think one at the beginning and then one closer to the end when we've identified exactly how we're going to use these funds.
The CDBG grant money is normally, as I understand it, for housing and all this kind of stuff. And so there's all these rules and regulations that go along with it. Okay? Well, this CDBG grant is the code. And the federal government, in your infinite wisdom, didn't bother to adjust any of the rules and requirements. So you got to have the same kind of hearings and everything else that you would have if it was going to go to housing. So that's the reason for this.
And I kind of followed the same template that was used for the truth and tax hearing hearings. And then it authorizes the treasurer to post the hearing. I hope she's okay with that. If not, I can do it. One of us will do it. But I just left it as it was. I didn't know if that mattered. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. And you can see in there, I put the amount that we are allocated of around $220,000. That's based on a formula that CDBG does for each county. So that's not just arbitrary. It's mighty arbitrary, but there is some reason behind this.
Okay. I'm sure we can add that in because any chance of getting those dollars, we need to follow the rules.
This is the one, commissioners, that if there's money left over after we take care of our needs, then the local community can access part of this as well. So pretty important we do this way and make it available. Most of the townships, I don't think, have probably had a lot of COVID money, but some of the cities may. Reading and Jonesville and Moleskine and so on, Litchfield.
Okay. So any questions or? As long as we got you on the stand there. Do you know if Ken is coming this morning?
I think I forgot to tell Marnie to adjust it. I mentioned to you two that today was his kid's first day of school and he didn't want to miss it.
I do vaguely remember that.
So he is set for the 22nd.
Okay.
So I'll have to get in touch with Marnie to get it added to that agenda.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I told Becky to come early. So we'll just bump Becky up on standing orders. But yeah, that's fine. We'll put Ken on the 22nd. So, okay.
Do we have more copy? Will we get the copy from now when he comes?
They were supposed to mail out hard work.
Here, there's a copy right here. You want one?
We have.
What can we do? He sent a box up.
We should have got 10 of them.
We did. We got them. Marnie got them. Yep.
Yeah, I kept mine. So, okay. I'm good then. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
All right. Any other public comment? I think we've about covered that. Move along. Consent agenda. Motion to approve, please.
I second that.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Correspondence is listed in your packet. Go ahead, Ruth.
On the first correspondence, number one, there's a letter from the Conservation District in here.
Yep.
And I would like to move to give the Conservation District $100 per what they're asking for in this letter, with the money to be taken out of the contractual services. Line item.
$100. Can we do that now?
I think I thought we had to move it to like your agenda. I didn't think we could do it.
It's correspondence.
What's our parliamentary say? Can we take that up right now?
You know, you guys do it however you want to do it, depending on the sitting board.
Yep.
And all honesty.
We're good with it then. She's made the motion. As long as we can get a support.
I second that.
We'll do it now.
Okay. So the reason why I made this motion is because I've been thinking about this and reading this letter. They came up before us and spoke to us. They also got a grant for $3,500. So they did get a grant. And I think that they worked really hard on this collection. And this is a very good thing for Hillsdale County because it helps clean up. And I think it's very good. And then the other thing is in here, they're going to ask the local townships for a monetary donation. And I feel like if the townships are going to be asked to help pay for this, then we should help pay for it too, because I feel like we're all in this together. And I think that we should support them for $100.
Commissioner Brown, would you say to take that money from the contractual services account? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Ruth. I mean, I think it's a huge service. I mean, getting rid of all the tires and all the electronics that could otherwise end up on the side of the road or who knows where. I mean, I think the amount could even be raised, couldn't it? Is there money? Could the amount be raised?
No, I don't think so.
You don't think so?
There's too many. And I agree with Ruth. There's too many unknowns right now. We don't. Finishing up this year and 2021 are going to be interesting, you know, budgetarily.
It's just a service I think we need and we don't want it to go away and.
But if there's 18 townships in us, that's 19. And there's four cities, that's 23. So if everybody gave 100 bucks, there's 2,300. It's pretty well taken care of.
Well, they need 5,400.
They need almost 5,500.
There are individuals I know that have already contributed individually.
And the fair. There's.
Okay. So you think they'll be able to raise?
There are some private individuals that have kicked some money.
Okay.
Because I was out there the other day and asked about it. I wasn't out there specifically for that, but I had to sign some other papers for the firm. But biggest thing was they took in a lot more electronics than what they had planned on, which is good because I get tired of picking it up along my roadside.
Right. People just don't know.
To the west of me, that is a favorite dumping spot.
We close up Kirkwood north, just north of me, because they were coming out of Ohio. We went through the bag. That's how we knew they were coming out of Ohio, just dumping stuff.
It's sad that people do that, but it is what it is. But yeah, it's a valuable service. So any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify, saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Please, any further comments on correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
Correspondence, number three. I would like to move changes to the medical examiner report for August 2020. The monthly comparison to cases where it says June, July is to be changed to July, August 2020 in both areas. Right now, line number two. I received this this morning.
Oh, yep.
And I will be sending copies to Jody and to you as well. So that's a minor error there. And so that is the motion that I placed.
Well, we could do that clerically.
You want me to withdraw the motion then?
I don't know that it needs to be.
I don't think you would do a motion to change somebody else's report, but you could just submit that.
It's been submitted. Actually, it's received as corrected from medical exam.
Yeah.
Submit the corrected one to all of us and vote.
Actually, so I withdraw that motion and the errors to be corrected. And I'll be sending the paperwork to Jody and to you as well. I'll copy serve to the Board of Commissioners.
I'm surprised, Derek, you're high. We normally look them over. I never thought to have that.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Good catch. Okay. Anything else on correspondence? Hearing none. We'll move along. Regular agenda.
I want to add 20-083 that Derek asked us. Where would you want that?
Tried that in under Ruth. She's got all the other items. Let's let him have them all. Do it all, baby.
Is that a motion, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
I second that then.
Do we want to take care of the standing order? Yeah.
Yeah, we've got to remove Ken as well.
Can you do that?
And I move to remove, I move to remove Ken Talsman.
I second that.
Okay. All right. We've got a couple amendments. Do we want to just?
I just put them together.
Put them together? Okay. All right. Well, I guess since we're on roll here, we'll just, did we get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Not yet. I'll make that motion.
I second that.
Okay. So any further amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of the, excuse me, all those in favor of the agenda as amended. Signify, saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are good. Thank you very much. And Becky, you're up first today. And thank you for coming early.
No problem. I told my youngest to not call me again. He'd already called. His school started for him at 9:00 on the computer this morning. And he said, I don't think the teacher knows that they have to let us in. No, just be patient. Just be patient. She's trying to figure it out. So, oh my gosh. So I have for you today the 2019 annual report. And I wanted to just highlight some of that. And then I'm sure you'll have maybe some other questions about COVID-19. I know Commissioner Carolyn had indicated that she will. So let's just go through the highlights. So this is 2019, prior to COVID-19. You'll see there on the first page, after the cover, the commissioners from your board that represent the Board of Health, Commissioner Wiley and Commissioner Haswell. And we are very thankful for their insight and efforts on our board. You'll see the directors of the Health Department there, our medical director, Dr. Vogel. And then I have four other department heads and one of which, Yvonne Atwood, is still with the agency, but not in this role anymore. So next year's annual report will reflect Kelly Nichols as the Director of Personal Health and Disease Prevention. We also have the Area Agency on Agent 3C, which covers Branch and St. Joseph Counties. So that AAA falls underneath the Health Department. And of course, the AAA for Hillsdale County is a separate AAA. Our organizational chart is there for you to review. Of course, our Board of Health is our governing body. And then you can see how everything else falls below that. And moving on to the letter to the community, just some of the highlights from 2019. We did receive in 2019 our certificate for accreditation with commendation, which is the highest award offered by the state accreditation program. Our AAA worked very hard on their multi-year planning cycle, which included a needs assessment of residents, bids from contractors wishing to receive funds that come through the feds and through the state, and then taking action on those proposals by those bidders. Environmental health in 19 became focused on PFAS, although not entirely brand new in 2019. By the time we got into fiscal year 19, we were doing more widespread testing. And that was sucking up some of the environmental health team's time in trying to respond to contaminated groundwater and residents affected. They also had, for the first time in a long time, Legionella in a water supply that they responded to. This is becoming more common. I think because we're looking for it, but especially buildings that sit empty and then the water supply is turned on. And a good example are all the buildings that have sat empty during COVID. As we reoccupy those, there have been some guidance provided on how to basically push water through that system, recirculate, and then even in some cases, clean that water so that it kills off any lingering bacteria that formed while it was sitting in the pipes stagnant. Our environmental health, I'm sorry, our health education section did receive a grant for medical marijuana operation and oversight. And the proposal that the agency had for medical marijuana used the term lock it up. And the focus was on residents keeping their legally obtained medical marijuana away from kids who it's not prescribed for. It was wildly popular. And we did provide lock boxes for residents to assist them in keeping that product away from their kids. Our personal health and disease prevention section saw the end of the hepatitis A outbreak in Michigan during fiscal year 19. That had been going on for, it started in 17, went through fiscal year 18, and was really wrapping up by 19. Although Branch, Hillsdale, and St. Joseph Counties weren't really affected by the hepatitis A outbreak, we did take action to protect or to protect our residents by increasing immunization of high-risk populations and getting more people that hepatitis A vaccine to hopefully stop any spread. So that was a success in that we were able to see the end of that outbreak. We did have measles pop up in fiscal year 19 as a potential threat with larger-than-expected numbers of cases in the Detroit area, also had some cases in Chicago, and with us being right in the middle on US 12, very concerning. But what is causing those little outbreaks of measles and other vaccine-preventable diseases is the threat to what's called herd immunity by people who are choosing not to vaccinate due to most of the time misinformation that they have received through their peruse of social media platforms and stuff like that. So we know from history that the vaccines that we have are really wildly safe. But there are many people who still believe that they're not safe. So.
You mean to tell me that everything that's on the internet's not true?
That's correct. Yeah, I know. So pertussis cases in Hillsdale County were particularly high in fiscal year 19. Again, a vaccine-preventable disease. So if we can just get past the misinformation that's out there on the internet, hopefully we can help to prevent some of these diseases. Of course, fiscal year 19, as we were ending the fiscal year, was our triple E asset. And again, this year, we're seeing horses that are positive for triple E. Triple E stands for Eastern Equine Esophilitis. It's a very troubling disease if it gets into humans because we lack any immunity to it, first off. And it is particularly dangerous to those that do get it. Most people who get triple E die. Those that survive have lifelong health complications. So as you know, there was an effort last year to do spraying, aerial spraying. That did not come to Hillsdale because we didn't have enough cases, we didn't have any cases of horse disease here. So it did not happen here. But over in St. Joseph County, we did see some aerial spraying. And so did it work? You know, it's hard to say. But I think whatever we can do to protect people from mosquito-borne diseases is important. Finally, the Health Department is implementing an electronic medical record called Net and Yale Notes. And this is allowing us to communicate with the Michigan Immunization Child Registry in real time and move on to electronic billing, which is a good thing for the Health Department. The next page is on finance and the MCDC, my community dental centers. So you can see there with regards to our revenues that the largest chunk of the pie is in our governmental. We have 9% that we receive from charges for services, 10% for appropriations, 1% other, and then in license and permits, 4%. With regards to expenditures, the largest chunk is in salaries and wages, then fringe benefits. Supplies and materials follow. Some contractual spending there. And then the small ones are travel and training, rentals and leases, and other. The annual budget for fiscal year 19 was a total of $6,561,186. For MCDC, I won't spend a lot of time on that. I just wanted to provide you with some information about our dental centers. And you can see there that the Hillsdale facility is mostly catering to the 21- to 60-year-old population. County Health Profile is on the next page. The Health Profile is actually for 2018. That's the newest information we had for fiscal year 19. What's kind of interesting about this, I'll just pick on a couple. If you look at the number of teen births, for example, I'm sorry. I want to look at the pregnancy rate. So the teen pregnancy rate, it's in the third box, third one down. The state rate is 26.4. Hillsdale's at 27.7, so just slightly ticked up over the state rate. But you can see there that St. Joseph and Branch Counties are significantly higher with their teen pregnancy rate, which is, of course, that what we want to see.
If we have that information, yes. May don't see anything wrong with getting married in much younger age than the rest of us.
Yeah. Isn't that interesting that you're only at 27.7? So, yeah. Right, I know. So, yeah, that's true. All right. I'm not sure what else to point out on there. So just good, interesting background information on our population. Then we've got, the next page is the beginning of our Personal Health and Disease Prevention sections. And the first page is on WIC. And if you don't mind, I'll just mention that during COVID, we've been able to continue with our WIC clients, but all by electronic means, so by phone call. They no longer, at this time, The next page is on finance and the MCDC, my community dental centers. So you can see there with regards to our revenues that the largest chunk of the pie is in our governmental. We have 9% that we receive from charges for services, 10% for appropriations, 1% other, and then in license and permits, 4%. With regards to expenditures, the largest chunk is in salaries and wages, then fringe benefits, supplies and materials follow, some contractual spending there, and then the small ones are travel and training, rentals and leases, and other. The annual budget for fiscal year 19 was a total of $6,561,186. For MCDC, I won't spend a lot of time on that. I just wanted to provide you with some information about our dental centers. And you can see there that the Hillsdale facility is mostly catering to the 21- to 60-year-old population. County Health Profile is on the next page. The Health Profile is actually for 2018. That's the newest information we had for fiscal year 19. What's kind of interesting about this, I'll just pick on a couple. If you look at the number of teen births, for example, I'm sorry, I want to look at the pregnancy rate. So the teen pregnancy rate, it's in the third box, third one down. The state rate is 26.4. Hillsdale's at 27.7, so just slightly ticked up over the state rate. But you can see there that St. Joseph and Brales Counties are significantly higher with their teen pregnancy rate, which is, of course, that what we want to see. If we have that information, yes.
May don't see anything wrong with getting married and much older than the rest of us.
Yeah, isn't that interesting that you're only at 27.7? So, yeah, right, I know. So, yeah, that's true. All right, I'm not sure what else to point out on there. So, just good, interesting background information on our population. Then we've got, the next page is the beginning of our Personal Health and Disease Prevention sections, and the first page is on WIC. And if you don't mind, I'll just mention that during COVID, we've been able to continue with our WIC clients, but all by electronic means, so by phone call. They no longer, at this time, have to come into the office. And there's been a lot of need out there as well, and so we've been able to increase the number of WIC clients because of the folks that have been laid off or unemployed. We've been able to get more people onto that program to get them the nutrition benefits that they need. The next page focuses on Children's Special Healthcare Services. This is a really special program. CSHCS covers up to 3,000 various conditions and is available to families at any income level. The child just simply needs to have the qualifying medical condition that's outlined in CSHCS requirements. So you can see there that, let's see, can't remember which color Hillsdale is. Are you yellow? I have to go look. I'm not sure, I'm so sorry, I don't know. I'll have to find that out for you. But you can see there that of our various pies, there are about the same number of individuals in each of our three counties that we serve in Children's Special Healthcare. So a very good program, and we are glad to offer it. At the bottom of the page is our hearing and vision screening that we do in the schools. This is a real troubling year for this program. We offered some hearing and vision screening for incoming kindergarteners in our offices just the last week or so, and the schools are just now inviting us to come in. So we're going to do as many kids as we can, given the COVID situation. For communicable disease, which is on the next page, it seems like our communicable disease efforts, it seems like that's all we do right now because that's what COVID is, communicable disease.
Exactly.
So where this was certainly a very important program at the Health Department and always has been, it is sucking up a significant amount of staff time currently. So, you know, this just gives you a snapshot of where our communicable diseases have been for the years of 15, 16, 17, 18, and now 19. So it's kind of an interesting snapshot. I mean, if we just want to pick out porcupus again, you'll see that in fiscal year 19, we have 14 cases, and previous to that, we were looking at much smaller numbers. So.
Hep C, isn't that the one that they do have to care for?
Hep C is a chronic, so hepatitis A and hepatitis B, we have vaccines for, but not C.
Okay.
On the communicable diseases, and this is more reflection on the part of the Health Department. This is a reflection on the Department of Lansing. But if you guys look down through that, what is by far the biggest problem?
Sexually transmitted diseases.
Yes.
Chlamydia, gonorrhea.
And St. Joseph's though.
And we go on and on and on about COVID, and we go on and on and on about pneumonia, and we go on and on and on about all these other things. But the biggest problem we have by far in terms of cases is gonorrhea and chlamydia.
Yep, without a doubt.
And there's nothing coming out of Lansing to address the issue. And it was, I think it's fair to say there's a fair number of people that get chlamydia that don't even know and they end up sterile, which ends up, once they decide they want to have kids, they ain't going to have them. And it's an issue that's just completely moved off the table. Now, the other issues are important, I'm not saying that, but this is a huge issue, and it needs to be addressed from Lansing. Go ahead.
Okay.
That was a paid political advertisement.
Well, I'm going to turn the page to immunizations. So this gives you a kind of a snapshot of how many influenza vaccines we administered in the three years, including fiscal year 19. So they actually provided more flu vaccines in fiscal year 19 than we had in the previous two years. Total vaccines for fiscal year 19 were around 10,067. So that number's a little bit up and down, you can see there from the past. Our top-administered vaccines for 19 were TDAP. That's the tetanus with porcupus in it. Hepatitis A, adult hepatitis A pediatric, HPV, and PCV-13. So of course, the hepatitis A numbers there are high because we had such a focus on getting those high-risk populations done to prevent that outbreak or stop it. All right. So you can see there at the very bottom, how many waived, people are waived. They come into our office and meet with a nurse and sign a waiver form so their kids don't get a vaccine. So, in childcare, 2.5%, and in the schools, 3.5%. The next page and the following, I'm not going to spend much time on because this doesn't really affect you, but I wanted to mention again that Area Agency on Aging. They also have a program for elder abuse prevention and awareness. So this two-page spread talks about their AAA programming as well as the grant they have to do elder abuse prevention and awareness. So those are again in Branch and St. Joseph Counties. The next page then is on Health Education and Promotion. This is the year that we first received the medical marijuana grant. You can see our "Lock It Up" logo there in the middle on the left-hand side. And at the bottom, you can see a picture of the lockbox with a lock and key that we distributed in the three counties. Very successful program. Another thing that we're very proud of was Kick Butts Day in 2019, which took place at the Capitol in Lansing in March. And you can see there the picture of students on the Capitol steps. They are represented from Coldwater High School, Jonesville High School, and Reading High School. Now unfortunately, we did not have the tobacco grant any longer. That grant ended, and when the competitive bid process came through, we were not selected for continuation of that grant. So this was really the last year for our focus on tobacco. Our health educators continue to do work in that program, but we don't spend the focus on that like we used to. The next page is on emergency preparedness. You can see here some of the highlights from emergency preparedness in 2019. He talks about PFAS and the Legionella stuff that I already mentioned. Regional tabletop that we did on pandemic response, how very timely, huh? The distribution node intended to help develop strategies so that we could administer mass amounts of pharmaceuticals. So again, probably very timely. We updated our emergency operations plan and had a tabletop exercise on a measles outbreak. Couple of pictures there just indicative of one of the tabletops that we went to the bottom of the photo, and the photo above would be another training exercise. That would be the distribution node one. Our top hazards for Branch, Hillsdale, St. Joseph Counties are, for environmental, floods, tornadoes, and severe storms and winter weather. For chemical would be releases of chlorine, ammonia, and other hazardous chemicals for manufacturing or agricultural businesses. The next section's on environmental health. You can see here the statistics that they provide for fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 18. These programs in environmental health really tend to vary a little bit every year. It's not terribly predictive. So why did we do about 140 more private and public water supply permits in 19? Who knows? It's really hard to say what we did. And then for onsite sewage, for 19, we were actually a few lower. It's really hard to predict what's going to happen in those two programs. Food protection is more predictable in that, you know, we're better able to say, you know, what kind of inspections we're going to do based on the number of facilities that we have. Other programs that environmental health does, we do medical waste inspections. We do inspect swimming pools, campgrounds, body art facilities. We do quite a number of inspections for the Department of Health and Human Services, who are looking to put kids in foster care or daycare. And then we do inspections for septic, septic haulers, the ones that pump out tanks. And that is our annual report. The pictures all represent people that work for the Health Department and/or their children. So another fun way that the staff get to be involved in our annual report. So we appreciate your support of our efforts so that we can continue to provide public health services to residents in Hillsdale County. We are glad to be here and to support the residents of Hillsdale County.
So much like this board, next year going forward will be the Health Board. I haven't talked to Tom, Tom replaced, Tom Matthews from Branch County replaced Don Baker for sure. I've talked to Kathy, she plans on being back. And so, one's picture, Kathy and I will only be the two remaining ones. But if Tom returns, there'll be about 50/50, but we'll be looking at at least three new. So, it's change.
Yes, I guess it's that time for change.
But, any questions, Rebecca?
Good job, Becky.
Thank you. Comment and question, Rebecca. I want to thank you because your reports, when they come, they really do help. The district tribe has been busy as usual, but when your reports come, they get updated with the numbers, the statistics, what are we dealing with, you know? So those are very critical, and I appreciate, and I wanted to start with the comment because of the work that you're doing, it's not easy. And your main promotion of optimal health, obviously to prolong life and, you know, prevent all these communicable diseases that we're talking about. And just now, we talked about sexually transmitted diseases, what we're dealing with and the statistics that you gave in the graph form. I think the interest that the Health Department has overall for our townships, we clearly understand, it obviously assures us protection for public health and, you know, community and the environment and everything because we do offer services, like we check your septic tanks and everything and for childcare facilities and stuff. And I know I have a field that facility for my childcare facility that I state-run operation. So that is a tremendous help that we deal with and get from the Health Department. So, really appreciate phenomenal work there. The other question I have here is in regards with masks. So, as you do know, the schools have implied, and correct me if I'm wrong, seventh grade and up, they have the mandatory rule that they have to have masks, seventh grade and moving up. So what about the kindergartners to the sixth grade? They're exempt from masks. So what are we exactly preventing as it relates with age-wise, with one place with mandatory, made mandatory mask requirement? And the schools have not made a mandatory requirement for a kindergartner up. But yet, the same kindergartner age, which is four and a half, five-year age, for example, when they're visiting to a hospital for a checkup or whatever, they are supposed to wear a mask for a four-and-a-half-year-old. So what are we looking at that, could you shed some light on that, just for the townships and, you know?
Yep. So the mask requirement in the mandate, the roadmap that the state put out for schools is actually sixth grade through 12th grade is supposed to be a mandatory mask when you're in school. The recommendation for K through 5 is that they wear a mask, but it's not required in Phase 4, which is the phase that we're currently in, Phase 4. So the reason that the roadmap left it up to the school with regards to the younger kids is that they have been shown to have less of the virus to spread than older kids. So there's, Dr. Vogel does this much better than I, but there is a protein that we produce that when we're younger, we don't have as much of. It's this protein that the virus latches onto and makes us more susceptible and then more likely to spread. So when they put together the roadmap, they took a look at the science as we know it, which we know it keeps changing. So we have to keep looking at these regulations. But the science as we know it at the time indicates that the younger kids are less likely to be spreaders. The other thing that we do in K through 5 is that we're asking the schools to keep those kids in what's called a cohort. So we want that first-grade class, for example, to stay together throughout the day, to be separate from the other first-grade classes, to, you know, for the school to use strategies to keep them separate from the other elementary kids when they have lunch, when they're on the playground, and all that type of stuff. So because we have the ability to cohort a group of kids in one classroom, and we know that it's less likely for them to have as much of this protein that attracts the virus and makes them less spreaders than other people, that's why the roadmap indicated that with regards to that group of kids, that they could, they could go without a mask in their classroom. Now, of course, when they're in the hallways, in common areas of the building, they are still supposed to have one of these on. The other thing we're dealing with, no coughing. The other thing we deal with with this population, is these younger kids, is the fact that, especially in a classroom setting with one teacher, maybe one aide, that it's going to be really hard for those kids to focus and to keep these masks on. It's going to be hard enough at the high school and middle school level, but much more difficult at the younger level. And I think when they looked at, you know, like the little kids going into hospitals and stuff, they were looking at, that's a child that's with their parents, you know, and the parent should be able to provide proper direction to that child at that time. And then if it's not in an environment that the child really should be in or has difficulty with a mask, the parent can take them out of it. So, I don't know, my thoughts.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So I saw a cartoon the other day with kids in the classroom, you've probably seen it, and the kid's taking the test, right? And he keeps going like this, he's got the answers all wrote down in his mask.
Oh, wow!
Yeah, it's no longer, it's no longer on the arm.
Right, it's in the mask, wow!
I'm sure all teachers have seen that cartoon by now too.
All new for 2020.
Oh my gosh, yes.
My grandkids go down in Indiana, they go to Brownsburg. They've been at the school for a month and a half, there have been any problems.
They have masks as well, mandatory?
They wear masks, and they get, I think it's five minutes off to get the mask, take the mask off every, for five minutes, I think it's every two hours. And masks, I don't know, screw around with the kids, they can't see, so anonymous.
Right, everybody's an incognito.
But they wouldn't have any problems down there. So if it's handled right, you can go back to school.
Okay, good.
COVID testing, ISD, how many did we have? How many positives?
See, if I remember right, I think we tested 187. There might be a little off on that. 187 people came through to be tested. And in Hillsdale County... And in Hillsdale County, one new positive from that event. There were other Hillsdale residents that came through, had already been positive prior, and when they tested again, they still tested positive. Which is why when we started this COVID-19 outbreak, this pandemic, we were looking at a test-based strategy to release people to go back to work or whatever. Well, what we have found with the test-based strategy is that it is problematic because once you recover from COVID, you still have particles of the virus in your mucous membranes and stuff, in you. So particles, not the full-blown virus at this point, but still particles of the virus. And the test is looking for RNA. So the RNA is what it's looking for, which if it will pick up particles, it will pick up the full-blown thing, it doesn't matter. If it's positive, it's positive. So we don't use a test-based strategy anymore. We now use a symptom-based strategy. So if you are tested and you test positive, we're looking for an improvement in symptoms if you have them in 10 days post-testing. So if you're asymptomatic, you have no symptoms. Although a lot of people that are asymptomatic think they're asymptomatic, and they actually did have symptoms. Their symptoms might have been diarrhea, or their symptom might have been a loss of taste or smell. So they don't think that that, you know, relates to COVID. They just think of cough and shortness of breath and a fever. Well, there's a lot other symptoms with COVID than that. So even with the asymptomatics, though, if they truly are asymptomatic, 10 days from the date they were tested, and then we release them.
Thank you.
Bruce, the health department has really done a very good job for the last five months through all this. They've been cussed and disgust and reamed up one side and reamed down the other for enforcing what the governor has said or for not enforcing it strong enough. They've been right in the middle of a lot of very emotional folks that have been worked up about this. And I understand that. But they've been very deliberate, very plotting, just keep doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I think they've done a good job. We all know more now than we did five months ago. We're all smarter than we were then. But the health department has to enforce the governor's orders. They're a state agency, and they don't have a choice in the matter. But they've tried to do it with some sensitivity and some understanding and not come down with a heavy hammer like has happened in other counties. And I, you know, for the most part, I think they've done a good job. They really do. And they've put an awful lot of work in. The people over there at the health department put a lot of extra hours in. And I think they're be commended for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, just one more thing. You know, when the, when now, somebody's tested and then the recovery report, do you also put that on your website, the recovery report, as it relates with the new cases and death and how many were tested?
We are not listing that.
Okay.
The reason we don't list a recovered number is that the definition that the state came up with, and they report like a statewide number, forgets that some people have a disease longer than 30 days. So the state's definition, you know, once you're tested, 30 days later, you're considered recovered. And we know that there are people who are in the hospital on a ventilator after 30 days. And they may make it, and they may not. So we don't do that. And to adequately report that number correctly would take a tremendous amount of our staff. We just don't have it. We don't have time to do that. So we just aren't doing it.
Right. And just so you know, the last Thursday that you had the free COVID testing, I did share it with my townships and stuff. I think some went, a lot of number of people went, got themselves tested. And the other thing is, I know you're in search for nurses, correct?
Yes.
So that, are you still looking? Because I have been sharing that information. Do you know what the number you're looking?
Well, we were looking at hiring, bringing on three full-time nurses. We're finding that very difficult. So now we'll take any warm-blooded nurse that's willing to come work for us, part-time, full-time. You know, we thought that it would be more attractive to hire them at a full-time, but we're not having much success. So I think we have one that we're going to be able to bring on. We had identified three. One turned us down because we can't guarantee that there will be permanent employment. So that was really sad. And then the other one, just I can't remember what the reason went on that one. So we've got one that we're still going through the onboarding process and hoping that she, she makes it. But we're also going to need these folks for immunization clinics.
Sure.
So they're not just going to be case investigators, but they're also going to be shop givers, especially with flu vaccine. And then if we get a COVID vaccine, that one as well. So.
I'm still working on Shelley.
Part-time would be good.
I showed her the ad again. She says, "These are full-time." And I says, "Becky, take anything you..."
Anybody that walks and breathes and is an RN. We have another staff person who, I think she's talked her husband into putting his name in that, too. But, I mean, still, we need more. We need more.
Just so you know, I'm going to keep sharing that with our township so we can get some good number. I'm sure people are looking for jobs, especially in the medical field, so.
Yeah.
We'll get you there, Rebecca.
Okay. Any more comments?
Inconsistencies of the executive branch of Lansing as far as what's closed and what's not closed. And there have been inconsistencies. We all know it. Don't blame it on them. They're simply there to enforce whatever comes out of Lansing. Put the blame where it belongs, okay? Don't scream at these people. They didn't make the rules.
Gyms stood open today. Gyms and pools, indoor pools opened today. Oh, so.
Safely.
Safely. Reduced numbers.
Any more comments or questions today?
Good job, Becky.
If not, we're going to, I'd like to take up, while Becky's here, I'd like to take up the lease, which is 20079, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Resolution 20079. To the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we, the Board of Commissioners, authorize Mark E. Wiley, Chairman, to sign the attached building lease agreement for 20 Care Drive, Hillsdale, Michigan, between Branch Hillsdale St. Joe Community Agency and Hillsdale County. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Chazol, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Support.
Okay, now this resolution, everyone, the reason for this new contract is because the mortgage on the building out there has ended. It's been paid, the building's paid for. So the building has returned to the county of Hillsdale. It's now our building. And in the past, what had happened out there is that we gave, they have a dental clinic out there that pays rent. They have a CAA, Child Abuse Prevention Association, that pays rent. And then MSU Extension, which we fund, paid rent, okay? And that rent went towards paying for the mortgage. And then they picked up the cost of the, excuse me, the cost of the electricity and all that kind of stuff. And anything that's been out there in terms of fixing things up, okay? You guys paid for it, even under the old one. What transpired, what's come about, is that now that we own the building, we're going to charge them $1 a year, okay, for rent. They're going to pay all of the utilities. They're going to pay, they're going to put $2,000 a month, $2,000 a month, into a capital improvements fund until that fund is up to $72,000. Once it's at $72,000, then they no longer have to put money into it. But if a capital improvement project, a parking lot, a new roof, heating and air conditioning, if that gets done, it takes out of that. Because the county's not going to be responsible for paying for it, it'd be them. Comes out of that, and that drops down to 54, then they have to start putting $2,000 a month into it until it gets back up to $72,000 again, okay? For the rent. They're going to get the rent, going to go directly to them from the dental clinic, and they're going to get the rent from CAA. MSU Extension will no longer pay rent, okay? With all of those things taken into account, basically, their cost that they had before is going to drop about $2,600. Our cost as a county is going to drop $2,800 because we no longer have to pay the rent, give the money to MSU Extension to pay the rent. So we're both coming out about equal there. We've made provisions to keep the building fixed up, okay? Major repairs and so on and so forth. And they're still responsible for cleaning it and paying the utilities and all that kind of stuff, paying the insurance, everything. We have no costs out there whatsoever. And we're saving because we no longer have to give the $2,800 a month to MSU Extension to give to them to pay the rent. We won't be doing that anymore. So Mr. Chairman, is there anything I missed?
Do we have, do we have a lease agreement for MSU Extension to stay there or at no cost for a certain amount of time?
What do we have with MSU Extension?
There is an agreement, but I'm not sure the language of that. I know they've...
I haven't looked at it, so I don't know.
Yeah, I can't. It's been a long time since I, because that's been just ongoing for...
I didn't think to pull that either. I don't have it with me.
I mean, I'm just, that's my only caution with the whole thing. Because that was the question I was going to ask is, are we continuing to pay rent for MSU Extension? We are not. But where is that indicated? Where's that agreement?
Hillsdale County owns the building. So I guess you guys get to decide who has what space. The...
We own the building, so that question would be addressed through this lease. That would be looked at somewhere else. But if they want to leave and go somewhere else, that's fine. But we just wouldn't pay the rent for them if they meant somewhere else either. I would never go for it.
And I'll, I'll take a look at the current lease agreement or sublease that we have with MSUE and make sure that the time doesn't go past the beginning of this one.
Agreement? That's what, that's what I was wondering.
This is how we would just need to do, I think, some kind of an agreement for all involved that, you know, that it ends.
Right, and they can stay there for, however, if you've signed two years or three years, but at no cost. I mean, I just think that would be followed through with on that to make that work.
The reason I think this is a good lease is because the state of Michigan is hosing us on the DHS building. And we've tried to change that, they pay for nothing.
Yeah.
And that building is deteriorating. And down the line, whose responsibility is it going to be to fix it up? The county of Hillsdale. We've set this in place so that the responsibility for keeping it up and fixing it up is on the health department. They're going to have to do that. And we're putting money inside until it's there. If the state of Michigan would only be so understanding. Derek?
I just happened to catch the part where you were talking about MSU Extension. And in the actual lease, there's a section that says that MSU Extension gets to occupy that space at the county's discretion. And the county gets to maintain that space however they see fit. So there is a clause in the actual lease with the health department to address the extension office's space.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Is it in, is it in our packet?
Is it in?
No, I don't remember. It's not here. No, it's not, not at all.
Okay.
Is that, do you not have the actual lease that we put together?
We have the lease, remember, for her. We have that in the packet. That's in the packet.
This is what they're approving. I didn't remember reading that. I'm sorry, Derek, if I missed it.
Sorry.
Take your time. I couldn't find it.
I just started reading that, so I'm sorry.
I know that there was a copy that addressed that. Just skimming, I'm not seeing it.
Well, we just want to make sure that that's in there.
I wonder if we got the right copy? Because this drafted, I have two or three times.
And I don't, I didn't bring any of that with me because I just, I didn't, didn't think to.
This does, this doesn't have any in either, the bit about that they get to keep the rent.
In the resolution or in the...
Can you go down and get, can you go down and get the...
I'm going to get the last one that I had.
Get the last one, then you can bring it up. Let's put this aside.
It's fine.
I just, I did not read that in the lease.
Oh, I agree. It's a big catch.
Just concerned about.
No, it's a big question.
Thank you.
I know what we all agreed to.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything in it either, so.
But we just, I think we just maybe don't have the right.
Do you mind, Becky, you know where Derek's office is at.
Yep.
Do you mind going down and making sure we've got the right copy?
Yep.
Because he's going to pull it up.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't think this is.
I don't think this one is either.
I don't think, it can't...
Who gave this to him?
I'm not sure. Who submitted this one to Merni?
Because the one that we were over also has in it the bit that...
About the rent from the other...
They get to keep the rent.
From the other people.
From the other two entities. Because I didn't want the next commissioners or down the road to come back on and say, "Well, that's our, and it's our building."
That's true.
And that's not in there either.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Okay, we can kind of postpone any action on that 79 for the moment until we get some clarity here.
Yep.
Okay. So while Becky and Derek are checking on that, let us move...
We need to table this.
Okay.
Because otherwise it stays open because you have motion to support.
That's true.
So you don't, unless you want to wait.
No, we don't really want to wait because tic-tac, they might be down there 20 minutes. Okay, so we need to motion to table it, and then we can bring it back.
Till we get further information.
I second that.
It's supported, it's non-debatable, it is a roll call, I believe, isn't it? No? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's tabled for the moment. Okay, moving right along. Ruth, I believe you're up.
Okay. Well, since the last Board of Commissioners meeting, what I did was I finished up the MAP conference. The MAP conference went over two weeks. And so the second week of it, I did, I finished it up. I did what I could of it. There was a, there was a workshop on boosting quality of life for your veterans, which I thought was very good. And then I did some other stuff, and I know that Nemada was on it at the same, same time I was.
Yes.
So I thought it was very well worth it. I felt that $50 was very well worth it. And I even think that they ought to do something like this virtual, maybe every other year, and do the work for conferences every year once we get back to normal. Because this saves a lot of money doing it this way than having those conferences up in Lansing. Now, I had, I had three different conferences that were going on at the same time, the same week. I also had my suicide prevention. Did you do the suicide prevention, Bruce? You didn't do it? Why not? This was 10 hours over two days. And there were two, there were over 2,000 people worldwide participating in this, virtually. And the guy that was running this whole thing was in Australia. So there was a time difference going on. But it was very intense, and it was a lot of information. I'm surprised, I'm surprised Bruce didn't do it because he said he was going to. But anyways, it was just a lot of information. Most of these people are professors at universities. I like doing stuff like this because it, because it gives you a different perspective than just Hillsdale. It starts talking about a lot of stuff that these people have done research and have studied, have studied this all their lives. And it was really good. It was free. This was free. So I did that, and then the same week that I was doing those two things, I was doing my travel agent virtual conference also, which was good. But it was a lot all at the same time. I'll stop, so you can talk.
Yes, I think you guys have been working on the former version.
Down but not out.
Where did this one come from? Do you have any idea?
It looked like one of the very first ones that we had done.
It looked like what?
It looked like one of the very first ones before all this.
Who gave this?
I don't know.
All right, if you look at this, I just gave you, number five is maintenance and repair.
Yep.
Okay?
I have mine, so...
And you can see where it's got in there that they have to put 2,000 each month into fund until it reaches the balance of 72,000. And to maintain this balance and to begin contributing again at any point in which the balance drops below 72,000. Number six is the assignment and subletting. And if we go halfway through, it says tenant shall be fully liable on this lease unless landlord agrees otherwise. Additionally, any rent collected on the sublease by the tenant is to be collected and utilized by the tenant. The landlord retains the right to utilize its AC fifth, the space currently being occupied in the Michigan State Extension Office at no cost. So that gives us the right to do that. They can't kick them out. Okay? Insurance indemnification, number eight, okay? They have to keep the insurance up, okay? Million dollars. The landlord shall have a right to have additional insurance as its AC fifth if we wanted to. They've also got insurance from the health department on all the equipment that's in there. And alterations, nothing can be done to the interior of premises without the landlord's permit, permission. No exterior changes may be made without the landlord's permission. And I think that takes care of everything that we feel is questioned. And I applaud Commissioner Gaines for questioning because this is the right lease.
This is good.
Yep, this is good.
You want to approve the right lease.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good catch.
I need to remove it from the table. That is correct. So I need to entertain a motion to remove it from the table since we've tabled it.
I second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any further discussion on the right copy?
Just on the insurance, are we, we're the owner, but they're doing the insurance, so I don't have to insure on our own?
Right, that is correct.
Right, and they're indemnifying us too, so hold on a minute.
And we checked, and I told him to do.
I'll make sure it's taken home with the son.
Yeah, that's through the same insurance company.
MMRM.
Yes, thank you. I was trying to...
The only other thing I want to mention too, if you look at the terms up at the top there, it's for 20 years, and it can be extended. So what that basically means is that for the next 20 years, anything that needs to be replaced on that building, fixed up, so on and so forth, is going to be covered by the health department. Now, we can only get the state of Michigan to be so reasonable.
Still on the project list. Current administration shut me down, though. Okay, any further questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Rebecca, do you want to sign this right now, and then I can email you copies when I get back to the office?
Sure.
All right, sign this. If she wants to sign two of them, she can take one with her.
Oh, that's true. Okay. How about I go over here? I write here, so I get upstairs right here.
If I ever sign that one, if she ever signs that one, then she can take that one with her. Bruce, if you want to sign that resolution, please.
Done with me?
We're good. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
All right. We have that taken care of, and Ruth, you may continue.
I'm, I'm, oh, done. I was talking about this suicide prevention and...
Okay. Well, I don't know. You've still got a minute or two on the clock.
It's okay.
Don't you just vote on that resolution, how would you sign it? I'll be careful. Yeah.
Yeah, we did. Thank you.
No, thanks, sir.
Okay, there's that.
Sir, please. We just brought up about the veterans, and I wanted to tell you all something that happened to me so that you'll know. I had a veteran approach me that, he said, how come we're not handing out Meyer 50-acre...
Gift cards.
Gift cards. I guess they're like 300 bucks. And I said, I didn't know anything about it. He said, well, I went to get them, and VA here in Hillsdale is not handing them out, and I don't know why they're handing them out everywhere else in the state, the Veterans Affairs Office. So I went down and talked to Renee, and she said, well, first of all, they're not handing them out all over the state. She said they're handing them out wherever there's a Meyer in that county. And she said, second of all, she said, if they need something, she said, tell them to come in and see me. I can give them all kinds of other help from other programs that we have and so on and so forth. So I called this individual back and told him that, and I said, you go in and sit down and talk with him. Well, they did, and the next time I went into the store where he came to me the first time, you'd have thought I was the second coming of Jesus. He was so happy, because Renee had gotten rental assistance, she got him gift card out here at the Market House, all sorts of things. So if somebody tells you about this Meyer 50-acre card stuff, yes, we're not giving them away in this county, but we have plenty of other things to give away. Tell the veteran to go see Renee.
Renee.
And if they're legit and they need the help, she'll get it to them.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, Bruce.
And just to add along to that, we, you know, and I said on that board, we try to help as many as we can, but we also limit, you know, how much help to a person in a given year, because that way we can spread the monies that we have. So, you know, there is a limit, but, you know, we'll do everything we can. And Renee and Dolly always do an outstanding job of helping the veterans within the county, so...
Sure. Good point.
But in order to spread it among the many veterans, we do limit it to some degree, but there is a lot of... And there are some programs, and what I mean by limiting the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund is the dollars return limit. Some of these other programs are more flexible.
Okay.
But...
Good info. Thanks.
Yep, so anyways, so you're upset, Ruth?
Keep going. Keep going.
Okay. Well, we'll just keep moving then. So Commissioner Parren, you're up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, we've had a very good, busy couple, two weeks, and District Five in its entirety has been busy, so have the committees. So let me just begin with the medical examiner. You do have copies of the reports that were provided via email, but then I also do have the correction made, I have in paper, which I will be sending to the Board of Commissioners and, of course, copied to the county clerks as well, just for that correction with the June-July. So the meeting that I attended with the medical examiner investigator I attended also had the privilege of sitting to through two autopsy studies as well, very enlightening. A couple of things are extremely educating, new stuff that they talked about, that we've been having an uptick, so uptick in suicide cases. And the two important upticks that we're having is, one of them is suicide cases and the other ones are drug-related deaths. And the suicides were up. The drug-related deaths we were talking about in the county of Hillsdale specifically, that we've seen a phenomenal, you know, rise with fentanyl and cocaine and methamphetamine and a combination of both. So these are the things that they've been working on, especially with the COVID-19 lockdown. They have seen these two factors rise up. So in the month of August, they had nine autopsies. And what they have ratioed, these statistics, they have mentioned that in Lenawee County, they were about 80% investigated. However, in Hillsdale, they were 100% investigated. So in both numbers of autopsy that were, just in comparison with the two counties, were 80% both. We talked about a couple of new things which was enlightening, and I just thought I'll bring it here for our Board of Commissioners and taxpayers. They talked a little bit about the difference between what they've seen in a couple of cases as it relates with pacemakers and something called an LVAD, something to do with a left... It's kind of a, it's like a pacemaker that they've put, but that particular person is a ventilator kind of a thing and cannot do much of exercises or work or whatever. So that was something new to learn as to, as it relates with, you know, the cases with the two machines that they have seen in patients. And a couple of things that they talked about, the LVAD, was that the patient who does carry that particular machine, any kind of incident or just in normal, just a normalcy, doesn't have any pulse, just something new. As it relates with the pacemaker, they do see a pulse. So that was something that they talked a little bit about. So yeah, if there's any question in regards with the invoices, I'd be happy to answer. If not, we'll move further. I have been attending, like I said, Commissioner Brown rightly said, so the MAC conferences began August 18th, it ended on the 27th. So the last meeting that we had, that same very day, there was another meeting. And that particular meeting on the, on that day, they covered on cybersecurity and threats. So I attended a little bit and just kind of giving you an idea of what exactly they talked about. And we get to have all that information, you know, from our director, David IT, so it's really nice. But coming from the conference that I attended, it talked a little bit in detail about the threat of the cyber reaches, which continue to grow every year, and individuals, units of government, they're targets, and we as government, we're in target as well. So they talked a little bit about the malware, phishing, baiting, and how we can protect ourselves as it relates with county commissioners and what we see on a regular basis via email or... And what specifically, what that conference I learned out of it was that in this breakout, it talks about how to protect your sensitive information, for example, financial assets, interests, and cyber welfare. So that was, that was talked about at that particular meeting. That conference detailed out with cyber threats. So the next day, the conference again began at 10:00 and talked a little bit about Family First Act, which I wasn't really much familiar with, other than the CARES Act and stuff. And what it talked a little bit briefly about, that state leaders, as they work, they worked have, they've worked on detailing on federal family first prevention, which is called the FFPSA in Michigan, which is Federal Family First Prevention Services. And what that legislation does, it provides foster care entitlement funding. And a little bit what they talked about was, it was a limited set of prevention services for up to like 12 months, almost a year, for families and children at risk of entering or re-entering foster care systems. So I thought that was very interesting to learn and to bring back to our Board of Commissioners and share it with our taxpayers, our townships. It also talked a little bit about eligible services that consists of mental health, so that was really something new, something nice to learn about, mental health, substance abuse prevention, treatment, and in-home parent skill program. They talked a little bit about that. So that is called the FFPSA. So that was detailed, a really good educative conference that I got to attend that day. So that, it highlighted that. And so the next day, we, which supposedly was the very last day, and so the last day was the 27th, and they did cover a little bit more on managing emergencies and talked a little bit about, you know, how board meetings could, you know, relay information to the public, with detailing on tips on funding reimbursement, what we could share on that. It talked about track records, financial assistance, reimbursable items, and what future emergency management will look like. So that, that's what they talked about, because we're living in that era, you know, COVID-19. So it talked about what eras were something of importance to the county in the meeting. So that was, that was the last day of the meeting, so it was, it was really good. And so those, all those days were always, it was just learning. I think we did a lot of activities. What they would do was that every day, they would transfer us on different pods, if you may. So one minute you're attending this particular conference, and next minute they take you to another conference room. And apparently, there was also a little draw of a prize for the, for the folks who've attended the maximum pods. So I think some people, it was a $500 gift. I didn't get that. But anyway, there was somebody else, someone from Ingham County or something, but...
Did you do, Mark, did you do the MAC conference? Did you do any of it at all?
I looked at a couple of them at night, because all of those were put on the webpage during the day. I don't know that they're still on the webpage. I haven't looked here lately, but I did some at night.
Right, so that, it was very, it was educating. Moving forward, I don't know if you had any questions in regards with the legislative...
I'm glad you did it, Nemraada.
Yeah, thank you.
She did a good job. She was on.
Well, I agree with...
She did more than what I was able to do.
But I agree with your earlier comment. I think MAC needs to look at doing these...
Every other year.
Well, even if they did it once a year and had an in-person, you know, they do two conferences. If one of them was virtual and one was in-person...
Reach a lot more people probably.
I think so.
Well, because, I mean, for $50, it was a steal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you figure going to Lansing and them putting on a whole conference...
Right.
And paying for all that at the Lansing Center and everything else is, is thousands and thousands of dollars that doesn't need to be spent.
Well, if that's the case, Bruce, then our dues need to go down.
That's right. Our dues need to go down, because that doesn't need to be... They said the same thing on our travel agent thing. Everybody loved it, and everybody said, we don't need to have, I mean, it's nice to get together every couple of years, but we don't need to, you don't need to getting together and doing these conferences all the time. It's not necessary.
I think there's advantages to in-person conferences too, but to do two of them a year, you know...
Yeah.
They really could look at one virtual and one in-person.
Yeah.
I think.
The world has changed. It hasn't, it will never change back. I think virtual meetings are going to become something that is more commonplace, for sure. So...
Right, I agree.
Please continue.
So any which ways, with those, one last thing of the legislative meeting conferences that we had, they were also interactive. So some of those conferences, you know, you could watch, you could learn, take points, but while you were transferred from different pods of conferences and, you know, there were, there was a possibility to, you know, go live and ask questions, so that was really good as well. Okay, moving forward, I just wanted to share this. So we're going to have this mega road rally, which is September 20th. And what this is going to be is, since there's no parade, this is just something that people could, this is going to happen right at the, you know, where the courthouse is, just where the parade, I guess this is where you can have a look at it. It's on September 29th, Sunday. If you have a car, classic car, decorated, put a flag on, whatever, all supporters of Mr. Trump, we could have that rally. And like I said, this was something that was taught, taught about by the Republican Party and Lawrence Peter, who's the main guy with, with all this mega rallies and Trump's events and everything. So this is going to begin on noon, and what it is, like, is just basically if you have a classic car, or tractor, or truck, or whatever, motorcycle, farthest traveled, they say, decorated, come be a part of it, just to show your support for the president. This is happening on the 20th, so...
This is our boat parade.
Kind of a boat parade.
That's right.
I'm going to be out of time, so I won't be able to...
Oh, I see.
But it'll be interesting. It's an interesting event.
Right, right. So it's not a parade, as per to say, but yeah, just a little bit of something, you know...
For anybody that doesn't know Julie's comment on the boat parade, that was what, Marble Lake over the weekend.
And they're having them all over, they're having them all over the place.
Was it at Quincy?
Yeah, Quincy, Quincy area had one.
That's where you were, right? Yeah. Did you?
No, they're not, no, they're real boats.
Real boats.
And they had them all over the place. And some places said, oh, we expected four hundred boats and four thousand boats showed up, and it's been quite a, quite a thing. So we're not having a boat parade, we're having a car parade, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Doing something.
Something, something.
Show your support. I like it.
President Trump will be in Saginaw on Thursday.
Yep.
And I think there's a bunch of people from Hillsdale going, Lawrence Peter is organizing a group that's going to go.
And just so you know, Saginaw is about two and a half hour drive, so.
Mr. Chairman, not to be a downer, but if we're going to talk about this kind of stuff at a public meeting, then we also need to understand that we would be expected to talk about stuff from the other side of the aisle at a public meeting.
Biden will be, Biden is coming on Wednesday.
This is politics, it's not public policy.
Biden is coming tomorrow.
So. You are correct, so.
All right. And I don't know what's going on on the other side, so this is all I got. So I'll share that with you. And moving forward, I did attend the Community Action Agency meeting a couple of days back. So at the moment, those of you who are not aware, Toby, who is the CEO, her evaluation was conducted and a couple of questionnaires were, were put up there. So the main thing is what they're trying to do is staff organization development in regards with what the staff activities have done so far and what they've done so far to help during this remote, remote conducting of work through remote ways. So a couple of those questions will turn up there. Her survey was, was put up there for everybody to kind of, you know, give their comments. So the Community Action Agency is, they've been working on the fiscal management on their financial policies as well. So those were a couple of things that Toby has worked really hard on. She has worked critically for ensuring that they have been prepared for pretty much, you know, the issue that we're going through right now. So Community Action Agency, if you will, conducted this evaluation for her, and most of the folks were able to do the survey on something called a Survey Monkey, if you will. And so that was completed and sent just a couple of days back, so. And it looked very positive. A lot of things were initiated as an innovation initiative of how Community Action Agency is doing communication and skills with work via Zoom. What else? Community involvement, collaboration, all that was also questioned in regards with her eval, program operations, which are in compliance or not. That was something, another thing was also put into that Survey Monkey was board relationships and how positive it has been, you know, putting in through as it relates with the work with Community Action Agency that's being done, especially during this time with COVID, you know, everything done remote. And then the last was proposed area of growth and what we'd like to see. And I've been very positive with the work that the Community Action Agency has been doing, so I did put some of my comments in that. And last, moving forward, a couple of weeks back, I had the opportunity, I was elected as a precinct delegate, so I attended the Michigan GOP State Convention, which was conducted virtually. And again, these virtual meetings are, have become more interactive, so that was a positive of that, so I'm just going to leave it on that. If there's any other question, I'd be happy to answer it.
No questions? Very good. Thank you for that report. Julie, you're up.
Okay. I've been going through and speaking with my assigned department heads and so on and so forth here coming into the end of the year. And one of my conversations was with David Hopkin from the IT Department. And he's going to help me write a couple of new policies that I'll be bringing to the board. These are his suggestions that we adopt, but I just want to give you a brief synopsis of what they are now so you can be thinking about if you have any questions. The first one actually is concerning both him and the finance department, just that we would have a policy that all grants from any department in the county, that Derek would be made aware of these prior to actually applying and getting the grants. There are grant limits to which the county can apply, and once you go over that limit, it requires a special audit.
We're already there.
Yeah, so then this is why. This is why he's asking us to consider a policy concerning this, just so that everybody can be on the same page, you know, and maybe prevent.
That's a, that's a very good idea, but I think the emphasis needs to be in the fact that when grants are written, quite often, there's a local match that's required, and we don't know anything about it until after it's been approved.
Well, and that can be in there too. It could be part, also be part of the policy. But Derek obviously needs to be made aware of these so that he can keep track of where we're at on this level so that this doesn't happen on a regular basis. That will require the special audit.
And I guess respectfully, I would say if, if people who are writing grants do not clear it with Derek first, that when the grant is approved, that it will be refused by the county.
Okay. I'm just writing down the part about the matches. We've talked about this before.
Commissioner Gaines, I have a question, if I may.
I think this whole grant thing, I think it's a great idea, but, but single audit is not really the issue. The issue is us getting a special bill that we didn't know anything about because the grant was approved. If they don't, if they don't run it through Derek first to make him aware of it, then we won't, then the county will not accept the grant.
Well, that's why we need to formal, create a policy on it and have it, you know, in the record. So.
That's a good idea. I do know the courts have coordinated with Derek very well in the last couple of years on their various grants. So Derek is, has a pretty good working relationship with the courts, but some of these other grants.
Yeah, but may I say, Mr. Chairman, I talked to you the other day about this grant. If you remember, we gave him to do the paperwork. It's a lot of work.
Yep.
He doesn't have time. He does not have time, particularly with all this COVID stuff. He cannot do all the paperwork that's necessary for grants. And that's one thing, that if we're going to apply for grants and there's nothing on with that, then there has to be somebody in this county or somebody has to be appointed to do all the paperwork that's necessary to report that grant back to the feds or the state. And it could be a different commissioner each time. You know, you take charge of one grant, you take charge of a grant, but you can't dump it all on Derek.
Right.
You can't do it, plain and simple.
Yeah. Then we need to maybe talk about getting our financial department and making him the controller and getting out all our financial people in there so he would have help with that. Another, that's another topic.
I think the person that, the person that wants to get the grant, whatever department it is that wants to do the grant, is the one that needs to take responsibility for it because they know what they're doing and what they're, how to answer the questions and what they're, what they're asking for. I don't think it's a good idea to have a different commissioner do it every single time because there's, there's tricks to writing grants and how you write it and how it's presented and how you answer the questions is a lot determined on whether you're going to get it or not. And for somebody that's never done it before, you know, it just goes like that, turns it in, you're not going to get it. So you've got to have somebody that has a little skill and knows a little bit about what they're doing.
Qualified and experienced.
And my, my whole thing was Commissioner Gaines, what I was going to say was the fact that, and I'd like to highlight on what Commissioner Brown did mention, it does make sense. For example, it's the Sheriff's Department. So running it through, you know, Derek, I think we'd be putting a lot on his plate until, unless, you know, the timeframe is there from, from him or from his side to see, you know, if there are those grants can be written and if there would be any out of packet from, you know, the department.
But he wouldn't be in charge of writing the grants or anything like that.
No, absolutely not.
It would just be a review. I mean, he needs to be made aware of the basic items that are in the grant, like is there any matching funds required? How much is the grant for? So that we can keep track of the totals of grants so we don't go into this extra audit scenario either.
Right.
There's, it's a two-part thing, I think, that needs to be addressed. And David and I are going to work on it, but if you have any input, please, you know, email me about it or, and copy David on it. And we're going to be creating a policy and bring forward so that we have something in place.
And being good to have a policy and something else that might want to be, and I don't know if it needs to be in there or not, but it may, may be needed, is the acceptance of the funds. Because I believe Stephanie, you've had to sign for some of them, haven't you? Or, or do you just take, take the funds in when they come?
If I, if they come in, in the mail, my staff will take care of them.
Yeah.
Or through the state website, the state signal, I think it's.
Because I know there's been a couple I've had to sign just to get, just to get the money flow into the county. So, you know, we may need to address something.
And that would be appropriate because you're, you're the head tuckey tucker. So in most respects, when they're approved, they say, you got them, you have to sign for them to actually take them because you couldn't say no.
Right, right.
Okay?
Right.
Now, I want to back what Ruth said. I'm not talking about commissioners writing the grant. I'm talking about the issue we have, all the time and the effort is after the grant's been approved, and then you have to report every quarter, every half-year, every year, and all the reporting that goes on. That's what takes a tremendous amount of time, and that's what Derek is getting inundated with this grant over in the, in the courts. And the courts knew it was a large grant, and they knew it was a lot of time, and that's why they want to get rid of it because they didn't want to handle it. Okay? And I would agree with you that if somebody's going to write the grant, then they are responsible for filling everything out. But what happens if they don't fill things out after the fact and report properly, and then all of a sudden the grant's taken away?
Well, they're, they're on them.
All that money's been spent, and now who gets to replace it?
That's on them.
That's on the county.
So.
That's on them.
That's on them. They belong to the county. And if they don't, if that grant is not fulfilled according to the letter of the law, then we, all that money's been spent, we're going to have to refund that money. So who's ever put in charge needs to be somebody that's, I'm, I'm with you to say that it's got to be that department, but then that department has to report or give that information back to Derek so that he has it, so that he knows we're not left to have hold of the bag.
Okay. Well.
How does it work out? How does this work out with the sheriff? For example, just throwing an example, the Sheriff's Department, when they do write grants, are they going to come to one of the Board of Commissioners here to tell them if that's, I mean, how, how does that work?
You're going to write a grant, all they have to do is, is what she's saying, and we got to get the language right, is they'll tell Derek, this is what we're going to write, and here's a copy of the grant we're going for. So Derek's aware.
He has to be made aware.
Have we done this before in writing? Like a agreement, like a thing? Never done that before, right?
No, no. We need to create a policy for it.
So aren't we putting a lot of work on Derek then to kind of go through everything?
It's going to work for him, they're just going to inform him.
Okay, okay.
And here's a classic example of what happened back under Mike Nye. Mike Nye applied for a family treatment court grant. This was a long time ago. And he got it. Unfortunately, it was a twenty thousand dollar match every year from the county that had to be put in there. Nobody knew that. And when the budget, oh, Ron, all of a sudden now, well, you bet a pulp of twenty thousand for this. That's the kind of thing that's happened in the past that this is trying to prevent.
Yeah. So we need to work on, so I, this is what I have done from our conversation. Obviously Derek needs to made, made aware of it. He needs to know who's doing the reporting for the grant, that matches would have to be approved if there's any matching by the board, right? If there's any match for the county. And the acceptance of funds has to be discussed too, about who's signing for that and who's doing that part of it.
And when the reporting is done, that gets to Derek as well.
Yep. So those are the things. So we'll be working on that and bringing that forward at another meeting in a couple of weeks probably.
So does Derek?
Next two meetings.
Does Derek make the sole decision or does he bring it to the board?
He's not making any decisions.
Okay.
No, that's not what this is for.
Just keep it informed.
This is just for the order of business.
Got it.
So that people understand what, if they want to apply for grants, what the order of business is. Because we don't have a policy for it, and we need to have a policy for it, clearly. I was going to say, I think it's too much.
Is there something?
I hope it'll be, it'll either be the next meeting or the following one, in the next two, two meetings.
Sounds good.
So just for your information or for everyone's information, on, on some of these grants that we've gotten in the last couple of years, I will normally get an email if someone has not sent in their quarterly or semi-annual report.
Okay.
And then I'll usually follow up a Derek or with the department and make sure it gets submitted because some of these, and a great percentage of them, I've had to sign off on to get the money. So that's why I get the email saying, hey, we haven't gotten this report. Okay?
Because your name's on it.
I'm copied on it. I'm not necessarily, I'm not the sole one getting it.
Right.
So the person that's supposed to be submitting the report gets that email as well. So I usually follow up and I say, hey, you know, you know, I'll call them about this email.
Which a classic example of that is what we're doing right now with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission. And when that started, there was not a lot of communication between Kim and Derek.
Right.
And me.
Right.
And we finally got that ironed out, and now she has to report every quarter what's been spent. And she reports it, but she also sends a copy to me and she sends a copy to Derek, electronic copy. So we know that she's done her job in terms of reporting to the state.
Yep.
Because if she doesn't report, we lose all that money. Okay? So I think it's an excellent idea.
The second, so now moving on to the second policy also, and David is specifically asking this, that any IT equipment purchase must be approved by the IT Department prior to the purchase. And the reason he's saying that is because we have departments that are like going to Walmart and purchasing computers, and then they want him and his department to straighten all the stuff out on it because it doesn't have the stuff that the county requires to be on there and, and get stuff off it that they don't want that's preloaded and blah, 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 and it's a big pain. And so really, I mean, I don't understand why that's happening. If a department needs a computer and it's in their budget and it's budgeted, I don't know why they're not just having David order it, but.
Why don't, before you go too far with that, why don't you find out specifics from him, what departments, who, and find out why this is happening?
Okay.
Because there is money put in his budget to buy computers. He's getting thirty thousand every year.
Well, I don't think it's just, this is just one, this is just one example. Well, because I'll tell you one example, I'm not going to say the department, but one example is somebody got a grant, okay? And one of the things they can buy with the grant is a computer, so they sent their person to Walmart to buy a laptop, you know, instead of ordering it through David.
Rather than work through David.
Yeah.
Right.
So we can't, just can't have that. So we just need a policy. It needs to be pretty simple, just stating that all IT purchases need to go through David. That's just, that's how it's supposed to work.
Whether the grant paid.
Yeah, it doesn't matter where the money comes from, or it's in their budget, it needs to work that way. So we're working on creating these two, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention so you can be thinking about it. The other thing is, I went to the Road Commission meeting, and an interesting thing happened. There was a gentleman there from the Ohio Department of Transportation, and our county has signed an MLU memorandum of understanding with the Ohio Department of Transportation since we border each other. For one, weird things happen, like if a whole part of a department would be taken down by COVID, for example, they would come in and help us, or we would go over the border and help them. Especially like if you have a snow emergency or something like that. There was an example they gave where the Ohio turnpike shut down and traffic had to be rerouted, and some of it came up into Hillsdale County and was causing some issues at one point. That kind of thing, that they would work together. So I thought it was very forward-thinking of the two departments to join together and say, yeah, you know, let's, let's sign this saying that we will help each other. So I thought that was interesting.
Very positive.
Yes, very positive. The other thing, just for around the county, the dust control and briny went really well this year as compared to last year when we first brought about the new program that the county would help the townships pay for the main briny, the first briny. It's all done. Many of them have received a second or third coat, which the townships paid for, but so So that program worked way, way better this year. And of course, you know, weather always does figure into that. But last year was kind of a disaster, and this year it's worked way better. Seal coating is being done, fog seals are being done, and the asphalt paving has been completed for the county. So that's all positive. Also, Mark and I met with the sheriff's department in MERS. And I thought that it was a very informative and productive meeting. We have asked MERS for some more information from that meeting. But one of the interesting things about the meeting, which, you know, we alluded to in the past, was that, you know, MERS has given us for the 20 years we've been in here, you know, this thing about, you know, 8%, 7, and so much percent, blah, blah, blah. Well, that's, you know, their return, but really for us, our return has been more like 6.5, closer to 6.5%. So we've asked them for some more information pertaining to that. Also, they talked about some other ways that, there's some other cost-saving factors we could use. And we talked about some of the other programs also that they offer. So that's an ongoing conversation at this point. And as we have more information, we will continue to update you. The only other thing is, as Ruth alluded to at a previous meeting, I was elected the vice chair of the Michigan Works Board. And recently, because we lost a person. And so next week is the Michigan Works Conference. Michigan Works does pay for that. It's a virtual meeting, as was the MAC Conference, and I'll be attending parts of that next week. And I'll bring a report back for that. But that's my report, unless anybody has any other comments.
Road Commission, I just heard, excuse me for having to step out, but memorandum of understanding with Ohio. Have we checked to make sure that we can legally do that? And the reason I ask is because back when I was in the house, Amloy Township wanted to do, wanted to get ambulance service out of Ohio as a backup to Wright-Wahlwood. And I can't remember, it's been so long ago, I can't remember all the details. But it was something we had to go through to make sure that the state approved it, would allow us to do it. So I just urge you, if they're asking that, just make sure that it's okay for us to do here in Michigan.
I think, I believe they've done it with some other counties, but that doesn't necessarily mean they.
We could do it within the state.
Right. But I mean, the Ohio Transportation Department, one of the reasons they came to us because they had an example there from another county in Michigan that they had an agreement with. And so, you know, but that doesn't mean anybody necessarily checked that. So I'll check the validity of that, yes.
Good.
There's a quick question, Commissioner Games. I'm a little concerned about, one of my townships has issues with dust control, especially on the roads that were never really traveled. And you know, with the windmill thing, and then the trucks roaring 70 miles per hour. Can you believe that on dust roads or dirt roads? And so they've been having issues with dirt control or dust control, if I may. How has that been addressed? Or has it even been addressed, if you know, to the Crescent Company or whoever?
I know.
They're supposed to be responsible for that.
Right. I know that the windmill company is responsible for a lot of the repairs and different things, and widening of intersections, you know, the tubes. You know, if they damage those. So I can find out about the dust control part of it and let you know at the next meeting. I have a road commission meeting this week, so I'll ask these questions and get back to everyone.
I live on a dirt road, and you can't even tell that we ever had any brining.
Is that in Adams, Stephanie?
Jefferson.
Jefferson?
Usually they do it just before the hard, a hard rain, and it doesn't work. Well, this year it wasn't the case, there was no rain, and it just is, my car is always dusty.
And we had an extreme high number of 80, 90-degree days, and it just, it does take away the brining's effectiveness.
Well, in the original brining that they do in conjunction with the township, they do pay for a larger portion of that, but after that, then it's up to the township to do the remaining. And some of them do and some of them don't, just to do it.
We just need to hear about it anymore.
Right.
So I'll find out about that.
It goes through cycles. I've been doing this racket for 40 years now. It started off, it was all, it was the county that did everything back in the early 80s, just like they're doing now. Then everybody got kicked off of the county because they weren't doing the job, everybody said, and so on. So all the townships started doing it themselves. Then we went to 300-foot sections, and for years as a township supervisor, I went out and would stake out. People would say they wanted 300-foot. We, me and Steve Genofe would drive a stake in the ground and drive down the road. And we done a lot of Mountain Dews and ate a lot of Oreo cookies. We'd be out all day with the sticks in the ground, and we painted them red so everybody could see them. Well, that lasted for about 10 years, and then everybody decided, well, we could save money if everybody went back in together. And it wouldn't be so expensive. And then we could do everything. So then it went back to the county, and the county did all the roads. And now I guess the county's not doing all the roads, or they are doing all the roads, but only doing it once. And that one time, they were doing it three times. So it keeps changing because there's no perfect answer to it.
That's right.
If it was, we'd be doing it.
Well, they try to, all I know is they try to, you know, by taking on a larger portion of that first main brining and doing a heavier, you know, lay of it, they, you know, they're trying to help out. Because before, especially in some of the southern tier or the, you know, townships with less funds, you know, they wouldn't do it at all, because they couldn't afford it. So they've made it affordable to help sustain the quality of the roads. And it's working because everyone is participating in that main brining. Then what they do after that is up to them. But they've made it more affordable to at least get that first doused on it to keep it down. It's just not going to hold for the whole summer.
Sure, absolutely.
The townships need to, you know, take that on themselves.
Okay. What else do you have for us, Julie?
I think that is everything. I've covered everything.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for you? Thank you. Bruce?
20, Resolution 2008 to the honorable board of commissioners, we authorize Commissioner Caswell to sign the MIDC, Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, fiscal year 2021 Public Defender Administrative Services Contract. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Cannon, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Support. I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure, can I?
In here, it says under compensation, it says the attorney is going to get $65,000 per annum. Is that an increase, or is that the same as what she got this year?
Same.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? No other comments or questions?
This is.
Okay. All those in favor signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 20-080 is approved. Please continue, Bruce.
Okay. Looking at 20081, isn't it the same thing as 2008?
What do you see?
I don't see a difference, Bruce. There was some different, I had thought that at first too.
Or it's not the same?
No.
And this one has a contract. It has public defender legal services contract.
Public Defender Administrative Services Contract. And this is the public defender legal services contract, okay. 20081, to the honorable board of commissioners, we authorize Commissioner Caswell to sign the MIDC, Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, fiscal year 2021 Public Defender Legal Services Contract. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell, move for the adoption of this resolution.
Support.
Questions?
And this is to hire the specific lawyers who are going to take. See, the first one was.
For Kim, right?
A contract with the state for Kim.
Yeah.
And this is to hire the particular lawyer.
Okay.
I don't know how you guys got a handle that. The resolution says for Commissioner Caswell to sign, but the contract has Mark signing, so I don't know what you want to do. Either Mark can sign it, or Bruce can sign it, and we can write out and put Bruce's name in.
I've always signed the contract, and I don't know why, but I've always signed the contract, the legal contract with the state of Michigan. But I don't know why I should be signing these things, I don't care, but we can do it for this year, then next year you can change it. I'll be dead and gone, so it won't matter. I'll be gone anyway.
Hopefully not dead, Bruce.
I don't even know what to say.
I need your suicide prevention.
You go ahead and sign this.
You need your suicide prevention.
This isn't the one.
Mistakes. All right. I have to resign it, and I'll write it out.
Okay.
Put his information.
Okay.
Did we vote on that last one?
No, we haven't.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion on 81? All those in favor signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 81's done. Please continue.
20082, to the honorable board of commissioners, be it resolved that the county of Hillsdale will contract with Folk Construction Company for a structural analysis of the Hillsdale County Jail as explained in the attached documents. The cost of this analysis is not to exceed $7,000. This analysis will be paid out of account number 101.00-301-967.000 Sheriff's Project Costs. As this expense is unplanned and unbudgeted, a 2020 budget amendment for the cost of the project will be made later in the year, reducing the contingency budget account 101.00-990-701.000 and increasing the Sheriff's Project Costs account 101.00-301-967.000. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Cannon, I move for the adoption of this.
I second that.
So all this is doing is putting in place, and you can see what Folk has promised to do in the following page, and it's putting in place, getting us set, so that we know exactly what the problems are. I don't give a. Now, Mark informed me that he's been on the board 10 years?
No.
Eight years. And he's heard from the time he came on to the board about all the problems out to the jail structurally. That asphalt wall's fallen off, and this is happening, that's happening, and everything else. Well, when this was submitted to me as part of the capital improvements project thing, this was submitted as something for next year, and I thought, well, what sense does it make to wait until next year? If there's a problem, we need to know it.
Right.
For the next commissioners, we need to know it. So this is simply going to set it out so we know what the problem is. Now, if it comes back, if.
If.
It comes back, and there's $2 million worth of repairs that have to be done out there on the building, then there needs to be a discussion about, do you sink $2 million into an old building? You still have an old building, or do you start talking about a new building? Okay? If it comes back that there's, you know, $40,000 worth of repairs that need to be done, and everything will be hunky-dory, then that's a whole different ballgame. But at least this gets the ball rolling so we know exactly what the problems are, if there are problems. And then the next commissioners, the commissioners can address it.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Who did the last jail study that was done? Was it Folk?
No. The Folk were called because we, like, Bruce was right. Mark has been on board so long, and he's seen, the fact is that foundation, the structural issues had been going off for years, been deteriorated. So when we did want some work to be done, when Folk Construction came, they decided to say that you can't do any repair work until we have an inspection. That's because it's been deteriorated for so long.
Right, but I'm.
So this is going to be the first inspection in two years.
There was another jail study though.
This was a.
I don't know what year, how many years back it was.
Yeah, it's been a long time ago.
It was a long.
Well, that was, I don't know who did it, but that was back under, I believe when Burkhart was still sheriff.
It's in the office.
Do you know how long back then?
It's in the office.
Because I think back then the recommendation was to build a new facility.
Oh, I see. Do you know how many years back was it?
It's been a long time. I can't tell you for sure.
It's before my time.
Okay, okay, yeah, so you've been embarrassed.
It's in the office. Okay. All right, here's another question I have. This $7,000, now I'm reading this letter from Folk here, and I'm reading what it says down here. This does not include design and repair or repair details, specifications, as the problem first has to be determined. Phase two would cover this, and we would provide additional proposal for that work. Okay, I get that. But I'm just, usually when you do something like this, the $7,000, if we went ahead and decided to do their work, then that $7,000 would be applied toward the work. But the way this letter reads is that this is an additional $7,000.
Correct. $7,000 will include the inspection, the recommendation, the report, but also included in that, if I recall correctly, they were going to have to remove some blocks and some other places, part of the exterior to see more of the interior. Well, that $7,000 also covers replacing that. They're not going to leave a gaping hole.
Right.
So it says for fee arrangement, hourly rate with an estimated maximum of $7,000. Considering that we cannot see the structure, this is our best idea at this time. Until we open the wall up, we do not know for sure the final cost. So what's the hourly rate?
Well, I don't think, don't get hung up on the hourly rate because it's a maximum not to exceed $7,000.
Yeah, I know. But he says this is our best idea. We do not know for sure until we open the wall up, the final cost. So you're saying it's not going to go over $7,000?
Right.
That's right.
That's the way I read that.
That's what the contract reads.
See, I think the final cost is what they're saying as far as phase two.
Right, right, right.
And that would be in a separate proposal.
Right, right.
Only that resolution says not to exceed $7,000.
Correct.
This is just for phase one.
I'm reading their letter though. What's the timeline for this? When are they going to be able to do this?
This fall.
Done this fall? Okay.
Yep.
All right. That's all the questions I have.
Well, and I know I'm going to reach out to Jason, since Jason's kind of Fox point of contact out there, that I think, unless you folks think differently, I think it'd be appropriate for Fox to come right in here and tell us, you know, their proposal for what phase two consists of, so we know firsthand.
I think I agree with that.
I just think they need to come in and tell us what the problems are.
Yeah. Because then we.
Phase two, because if there is going to be a phase two, there needs to be RFPs.
Yeah. But at least they can tell us what the problems are, and we've got to, you know, instead of hearing it secondhand.
Yeah, the extent and so forth, yeah, I agree.
I mean, they might open that up and find out, I don't know what the inside of that structure, I don't know if it was wood or what, but they might find out that whole place is riddled with termites. I hope not, but.
You might find out it's all been petrified, and everything's perfect. At least we know.
Right.
It's not that old, it can't be. Okay. Anyways, further discussion on, where were we? 80?
82.
82. Thank you. Any further discussion?
The only comment I have is, are we going to, or it's a question, if I may. Are you going to have Jason contact Folk and have them come and give a little bit of, you know, presentation of what exactly they've found and what they're going to do?
That's what Bruce just said.
Yeah. Yeah, we, so, once this is approved, Jason will get ahold of them and tell them it's a go because he's the one that's been the point of contact.
Right.
And when it's completed, yes, I'd like them to come in and, you know, tell us.
Explain.
What our shortcomings are.
Exactly.
So, okay. All right. All those in favor signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Please continue.
20083, to the honorable board of commissioners, we recommend adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the board of commissioners will seek utilization of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Cares County Allocation Funding. Whereas that allocation, based on the formula applied by CDBG, totals $220,792.39. Whereas these funds are to strictly be used as reimbursement for the COVID-19 pandemic response as it relates to public health and public safety. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, the public hearing shall be held on September 22nd, 2020, 10:00 AM at the courthouse, board of commissioners' room, second floor, Hillsdale, Michigan, for the purpose of receiving testimony and discussing CDBG Cares Allocation Funding. Two, the county treasurer is hereby authorized to publish notice for such hearing. Send notice to be informed meeting, required in 24CF, our Part 570.486K. The notice shall be published not less than six days before the public hearing. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Support. Support.
Now, this is the.
The location is a problem. I saw that, too. It says the courthouse. Board of Commissioners, room floor two. I mean, it's not really the courthouse, it's the county office building.
At the what?
At the county offices. It says courthouse, and that's not correct.
What do you want?
County offices building.
Okay, county office building. That's amendment, I'll second it.
Okay. Stephanie, was that your comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So we have an amendment to change it to.
Who did the motion to?
Ruth?
Oh, Julie.
Julie, and he seconded it.
I knew Bruce seconded it, but I.
Julie's motion.
Okay, anything else on that amendment?
Might consider conference room, isn't that what it's titled out there? Conference room?
I believe so. So, yeah, it should be the county office building, conference room, is the way that should read.
You don't want Board of Commissioners' room?
No, because I think Stephanie is correct. I believe it says conference room on the outside door.
Two-ten, yes, suite two-ten.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
You had that as your motion?
Yes, sir.
No, it's my second.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, we have the amendment. Is there any discussion?
I'm looking for the new one.
Say again?
You again was available to him. He didn't change his voice.
Just so you know, this is the first two pages from the federal government, the best thing that we're doing.
Yeah.
This is the notice of public hearing. Okay? This is the authorizing resolution. We're going to have to have an authorizing resolution when we come along. And this is the authorizing resolution template. So I will give all of this to Stephanie, and you can hear it with Derek, okay?
All for a measly two hundred and twenty-five.
What's that?
I said, "All that paperwork for a measly two hundred and twenty?" No, I don't.
There has to be justification for all those four million workers out in Washington.
We can't lose our sense of humor, but, on the other hand, all right, we do have an amendment to the resolution, so we need to vote on the amendment first. Is there further discussion on the amendment? I think it's pretty straightforward. All those in favor of the amendment, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, amendment passes, so is there any further discussion on twenty-eighty-three as amended? Okay. So all those in favor of twenty-eighty-three as amended, signify the same eye?
Aye.
And opposed? Resolution passes, thank you. All right. Please continue, Bruce.
Okay, I got back from the three private entities about the pension plan. Got that information, I gave it to Mark. Have you passed it on to Julie?
Actually, I have not for that, I can't do that.
Well, I've got, I'm not in the board today, but they've all responded, I just want you to know that. Now, how your negotiations come out, you two, and you, and what you're doing out there is determine all the others. We got a notice that the, you remember there was a pot of COVID money, about seventy-seven thousand, twenty of it for the prosecuting attorney, fifty-one for the sheriff's department? We got a notice back that the, what Derek submitted, the prosecuting attorney's money has been approved, twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. And so, that we can use to reimburse us for stuff they had to buy to get them through the COVID thing. So that I don't become obnoxious at the next meeting with, when we have our auditor, I wanted to just touch on our audit, on page forty-nine. We go back and forth, we go back and forth with different comments being made about various sundry things, but on page forty-nine, approximately in the middle of the page, you will see that there is a planned fiduciary net position as a percentage of the total pension liability. And you can see that back in two thousand and sixteen, our pension fund plan was funded at fifty-eight percent. Then you can see in seventeen, it was funded at sixty-one percent. You see those right in the middle?
Yep.
Then it went in eighteen to fifty-seven percent, and then it jumped up to sixty-three percent. Now that looks good, except, if you look back in the assumptions, the assumptions were for nineteen, that we were earning seven point seven five percent on our investments.
Yep.
Okay? They have since, MERS has since lowered that to seven point three five. When you take that investment from seven point seven five down to seven point three five, that sixty-three percent, okay, goes down to fifty-eight percent. So basically, for the last four years at least, and I can't look back any farther than that, our pension plan has not gotten more fully funded, which has been the essence of my pointing and complaining for the last three years, okay? We're not putting enough money into it to get it fully funded. Now, being a math teacher, I just love the opportunity to be a teacher here. Commissioner Gaines showed us this little bellywreck, and the easiest way to handle something like this, so all the numbers don't scare you, is just to start with a buck, okay? If you start with a dollar on this thing, and you look at the first year, twelve thirty-one zero zero, you can see that we lost two point seven six percent. And just look at that as roughly two and three-quarter cents. So at the end of that first year, our buck is now worth ninety-seven point two four cents. Okay? And the way you get that is you simply take the two point seven six, make it, it's a percentage, so make it point zero two seven six, and take that away from one, and that gets you, you always shoot the one as your base year, that gets you the point nine seven two four. And you take that point nine two seven four, and you multiply it by the one that we started with, we started with a buck. So now, at the end of that first year, we have point nine seven two four. Then the next year, you see we lost another almost two cents. So you take that away from one, and you get point nine eight zero nine. So you take the point nine seven two four that you had the first year, and you multiply it by the point nine eight zero nine, and you'll come up with a number. Now you just keep doing that. Now, when you finally get to a year like the fourth year down, you see there's a positive increase, okay, you add that to one, you don't take it away, you add that to one. So you'll be multiplying by one point two four seven two. Okay? And you just continue that down through. And when you get done, when you get all the way down to bottom, you'll end up with three point two zero four four six. That means that that dollar that we put in back twenty years ago is now worth three dollars and twenty cents. Now, the question becomes, what did that, what kind of overall earnings did we get for the last twenty years? Okay? Well, that's very easy to do. If you think back to your algebra, you have powers. You take a base number, you raise it to a power. So what we, what I did was I took the six percent, let's assume we get a six percent, or let's assume we get an eight percent return, that's where I started. So you take one point zero eight, because we're going to go up eight cents every year, take one point zero eight, and you raise it to the twentieth power. That's that little X-Y button, X to the Y power button on your calculator. You take one point zero eight, and you raise that to the twentieth power, and you'll get four point six six zero nine cents. That means that if we earned eight percent every year, that dollar we started with would be worth four dollars and sixty-six cents. It's not. So then I dropped down to seven. Okay, so I took one point zero seven and raised it to the twentieth power. And that came out to be three point eight six, three dollars and eighty-six cents. Okay? That's still not what we've got, we've got three twenty. So then I went to one point zero six, and the one point zero six raised to the twentieth power gives me three point two zero seven one four, which is just about exactly where we're at, three dollars and twenty cents. So what that tells you is what I've been trying to whine about and complain about, is that we've earned six percent on average for the last twenty years. Now, the material that MERS will give you, they'll say, well, over the last thirty years, we've earned eight percent. And so they're basing what we're supposed to be contributing into this pension plan based on that, based on earning eight percent. We haven't earned eight percent, we've only earned six. And there's no way in God's green earth that in the next ten years, that six percent from the last twenty is going to go up enough that we're going to have eight percent overall. That's not going to happen.
That was my point.
So, the point that I've been trying to make and trying to make is that they are not telling us to put in enough money. Now, they use this one point zero eight across the state, okay? They don't differentiate for our particular situation. And all I've been trying to do is get an accurate answer from them, so that we as commissioners and future commissioners know what the problem is, okay? This assumption that they make of the investment rate predicates everything else laying out, because it tells us how much money we have to put in. If we're only going to earn six percent, then we have to put more money then, so that when we earn six percent, it'll be equivalent to what they're saying we'll get if we're earning eight percent. And the difference between eight and six doesn't sound like a lot. It's a huge amount of money over a twenty, thirty-year period. And my concern has been that the people at the sheriff's office aren't going to get their pensions, and that the county is going to end up with a huge bill, if we don't take care of this soon, it's going to end up with a huge bill to make sure they do get their pensions. And everything else in the county will suffer, because there won't be money for other things, because it's all going to have to be poured into this pension plan. So, what I did here, back to this audit thing, that's fifty-eight percent, okay, is if I had used their current percentage, the seven point three five, that means our pension plan is funded at fifty-eight percent. But if I used treasury, and MERS is correct, treasury has not mandated that the seven percent be used, but treasury took the smartest people in the state of Michigan and set them down and said, "What is a reasonable rate of return that we can get?" And what they came back with is you should not do any more than seven percent. Seven is the max. If we use the seven percent, then our pension fund is not fifty-eight percent, it's funded at fifty-six percent, which means we've lost money over the last four years. Now, I know that's a lot of numbers to get thrown at you and everything. This is not an emotional thing that I have with MERS, although I don't trust them any farther than I can see them. This is simply a matter that the county has a responsibility to pay for this, and we have been misled for twenty years in terms of how much we're getting, and that has led us to this shortfall that we're facing. Now, we, to our credit, have stepped up and refunded this shortfall, but I want to make sure, moving into the future, that whoever administers this plan is going to be honest with us and tell us exactly where we're at. And if interest rates drop even lower, and we can't earn seven percent, then is it six percent? Should be five and a half percent. Just tell us the truth, so that we don't wait twenty years and then have this huge debt staring a future commission in the face, and they wonder why we didn't do anything about it. That's what it comes down to. And I have no desire to change any part of the plan, I made that plan to Mark, and I made it plain to others. The plan is the plan. This issue going to someone else, to me, doesn't even, to me personally, doesn't even have anything to do with the cost, what they charge in administering fees. MERS should be a lot cheaper, because they're much larger, they have a lot more money. That's got nothing to do with the issue. That, to me, is totally meaningless. What I want is someone who's going to be completely honest, and I've seen at Lifeways, Watkins Ross be completely honest in terms of where they're at and what they're doing. And as I said, at one point, they had to dump a million dollars into their pension plan, that's how far short they were. Now, they had enough money, they could do that. We can't do that. So we've got to have that accurate analysis every year, so that if one hundred and thirty-five isn't going to be enough, but we need to start going to one hundred and forty or one hundred and forty-five, they'll tell us that, and we'll put it in. The other thing is that, when companies make their assumptions as to what your pension plan's going to earn, and how much it's going to pay out, and everything else, okay, when they do that, do they do it specifically for your municipality, or do they do it in general over the state? MERS does it in general over the state, and I get that, okay? But that doesn't allow them to differentiate for where we're at. Our people are not getting three and a half percent salary increases, yet that's what they're assuming. And that makes a difference, because if you're earning more, you're going to get more at the end, but you're also going to be paying more in, and that all needs to be figured in. MERS doesn't do that. They don't differentiate. They don't allow us to have our one and a half or two percent. These private companies will. They will match it to what we have in our county and what our situation is. So, that's really the essence of it. And we got this letter from MERS, and I read it, and it says this, it says, "By law, GRS nor MERS cannot require the county to pay more than what is minimally required into the plan." And when they made that statement, they are absolutely correct, which is the whole reason why it's even more important that they use accurate assumptions, because they're telling us to pay in based, one of their key assumptions is that we're earning eight percent, and we haven't earned eight percent for twenty years. Okay? So if they would have used six percent, then by law, they could be telling us to pay more in than what we're paying in, and that we shouldn't be paying more in, because that's all we're earning, the six percent. So, that bothers me when they make those kinds of statements, because those statements, while true, are misleading. They don't explain the whole picture, and it's kind of like they're trying to cover themselves, and I just, I don't like people like that. Lay it all out, the good, the bad, and the ugly, put it out there, okay? But again, for me personally, I don't look at the cost of the plan as being that big of a deal as compared to getting accurate, clear numbers, so that everybody knows where they're at. And I want those people out there to make sure that they're getting their pension full and complete, and at the same time, I want to make sure the county clearly understands the cost that's associated and can budget for it each year, so we're not left in the lurch. And no county commission did anything wrong for the last twenty years. Everybody put into this plan what they were being told to put in. MERS was not telling them to put in enough. That's really what it comes down to. So I want the public to understand that. There weren't any shenanigans going on here. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you, appreciate it. Keep smiling.
That's the problem, we can't tell if anybody's smiling.
Or chewing gum, or chewing gum.
Yeah. Any questions or comments for Bruce?
Just a quick one, so you do have some options if we were to withdraw or we were to go that route?
There are three companies that have all been recommended, that have all responded, and I'm going to try to.
Didn't you have three?
There were three, yes. Watkins Ross, associated with Green Leaf Trust, Watkins Ross, associated with a firm by the name of Penny or Perney. Well, that was really stupid.
I was going to ask you how that worked.
We've all been doing that.
That's what happens when you get old and senile.
I didn't see.
I did it earlier.
Watkins Ross, associated with Norris Perney, Norris Perney. And then the other one is Milestone Wealth, associated with a company by the name of Latitude, Latitude. So those are the three that have been recommended and that responded, all three responded. The other thing I should mention is that Ruth and I have started on the budget for next year. We've done the initial sitting down and going through everything, and Derek is now setting up times for us to go back around and talk to all the department heads. We've been very conservative, because we have no idea what's going to happen to our money next year. We're very conservative, but we're going back around, talking to all the department heads, elected officials, and, you know, as is usual, there's a lot more wants than there is money. But that's just the nature of the beast, so we'll go from there.
When I forward those to Julie, the ones that Bruce just mentioned, I'll go ahead and copy you and Ruth on them as well.
The options, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the three different entities that have responded, yeah.
Watkins Ross, yes. Okay, got it.
Yeah, we got... There's no reason for everybody not to have that.
Right.
Nope.
So are we still having Marnie from MERS come in next meeting? Or is she not... Are we going to have her come? Marnie from MERS?
No.
Okay.
No, not at this time.
Okay. Okay.
She's working up some more information for Julie and I and for the deputies.
And we'll share.
And as soon as we get that, we'll share that.
How did the negotiations... Negotiations? How did that work out?
Well, we have not had...
It's not a negotiation.
Okay.
The meeting last week was very informal.
Okay.
There was no negotiations. We do have a negotiations meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Now that I've said that, I'll check that off. Anything else, Bruce?
No, I think that's about it.
Questions or comments for him? So thank you all for signing the cert... I'll... The certificate for Carl. I'll make sure he gets that. He has technically resigned, although he is... You know, it's a two-week notice that he's given. So my understanding is he'll be with us until the twenty-first in some capacity. He has started over to Jonesville. So my understanding is he's going to be working afternoons or evenings on fulfilling his duties out to the sheriff's office. Outside of that, the... We really have no role in that. That is up to the committee going forward of the clerk, the proate judge, and the trust here. And I'm sure Marnie will keep us updated on anything that, you know, changes with that. With that said, I don't know if you all saw the recount, which, you know, I read a statement that Marnie had asked me to put on record. So the ballot recount confirms the August results. That was in Thursday's paper, September third. And I just wanted to read a couple of the paragraphs. Teams of mixed Democrats and Republicans took just over two hours Tuesday to complete the recount and confirmed that Rutan canvassed that two-hundred-and-fifty-three votes and received the two-hundred-and-fifty-three votes. Cass said the canvassers were satisfied with the totals. When asked, Cass stated that the recount had cost the county eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents, which included per diem and mileage for the teams who completed the work. Rutan paid a twenty-five-dollar firing fee with the recount petition. So that was in the Daily News, and it was eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents that you won't have in your budget talks. It's money spent. But anyways, comment?
Yeah. It's every citizen's right to do the recount.
That is correct.
Absolutely. No question of that whatsoever. And that's, you know, we do that. However, it makes no sense, just from a common sense standpoint, even if every vote, every single vote in Jefferson Township had gone in the other direction, the individual question would not have won.
Right.
That just, that just, commonsense-wise, I don't understand. So going forward, while we have rights to do these things, if it's not going to change the outcome, I guess, what's the point? And machine tabulations now, they're just not mistakes made. I mean, but again, if they want to do it, they can. If it's legal, go ahead. And we have to stay on the clock. I just hope that going forward, we use some common sense in that regard. Even if everything was totally messed up, it still wouldn't have changed the outcome of the election.
Correct. Correct. Yep. Good point. Thank you.
Don't make me about as popular as a skunk to the garden party.
Okay. The only other thing I've got that I wanted to share with you today is Brian Davis and I, of course, he chairs... I co-chair the Ohio, Michigan, Indiana Council of Government on the McSando aquifer. Him and I have conversed here recently, and we are attempting to put together a Zoom meeting. I will make sure that that's out to the public as well as to you folks when we do get it established. USGS has been doing their work as far as the geological survey. But neither Brian and I know at this point where they're at, so we're hoping they can be on that Zoom and kind of give us an overview of where they're at on that project. So that's that. As I get more information, I will pass it along. But along with COVID, we've been somewhat inactive. Last year, we met at least quarterly or more often. This year, we have not met at all because of COVID. So with that, unless there's a question or two?
Do you get updates in regard to that, McSando? Any updates? I know you guys are not meeting.
Yeah, we... Well, that's why Brian and I were discussing. We haven't even gotten anything from USGS.
Oh, nothing at all?
So that's why we've reached out to them at this point because, you know, we knew they got started, but they actually got started behind schedule because of COVID. But, you know... So hopefully, if I do get anything, I'll pass it along.
I appreciate that. The reason I say... Because some of my townships are very keen on, and I keep them updated. And the only way I get my updates is through you. So when you do, if you could share, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay. So to bring this up to public, kind of... Anything, Steph? You're only public.
Well, just the rules and regulations to the auction are on our county website. I forgot to mention that.
Okay. Okay, very good. Okay. Who did... Who got these cards? Or how many did you send out?
The chairman hasn't sent them out yet. I think they're going out today, but we haven't done through Stock House.
Okay.
And we used to send them mailing with all the list of properties and stuff. We send it to everybody unless they ask to be removed from our list. There's people that don't come anymore, but we still send them.
Okay.
So this is a lot cheaper for us to do.
Okay.
Everybody gets on the internet and uses it anyway.
Right. So the information for this will be on the county webpage. Okay.
Under Treasury, and then Auction, foreclosure auction.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. Additional business? Julie?
I just wanted to let everybody know that the hospital is sponsoring a free drive-through flu shot clinic at the county fairgrounds next Tuesday. It's going to be from ten AM to three PM at the fairgrounds. And again, it's a drive-through flu shot clinic, and it's free. So just public service announcement.
Okay, good. Thank you. May Maras?
Nothing at all.
Nothing. Ruth?
These are the jail studies.
Okay.
Two thousand and two and two thousand and three. Now, I'm sure nobody here knows whether anything was ever done on these studies or not. They just had studies done and...
Pre-dates.
Okay.
Okay. You're going to read them?
No.
Have you had the full report for us?
No. No. But it wasn't full either. It was some other companies that did it, not whole. These are supposed to be companies that specialize in jails.
Exactly.
There's... These... In the back of one of these is a whole bunch of jails from all over.
Oh, okay.
That supposedly, these companies specialize in jails. And that's why they went with these companies. But who knows whether they're even still in business or not? This is back in the early two thousands. Well, Sheriff Perkert's the one that spearheaded all that.
Yeah, I thought it was, Stan. But, okay. So if anybody wants to look at them...
They're in the office.
They're in the office. Okay. Thank you, Ruth. All right. Bruce, anything additional?
Well, in relation to the jails, you know, if you build a hundred beds, they'll fill them up. You build a hundred and fifty beds, they'll fill them up. So you gotta use, again, some common sense and keep things down. Now, a lot of laws are changing. We've criminalized just about everything we can in this country. If you spit at the wrong place, you can get thrown in jail. A lot of that's starting to recede. They're starting to back off on a lot of those things. So, you know, we've struggled. There's been some issues with seventy-two, which I think is our limit. But we've kept it under. We're turning more to tethers. The courts and judges have been going about that. So just don't get... We don't need to... If we talk about expanding the jail to a lot more beds, then there's going to be a whole lot more expense. More corrections officers, more utilities, more everything, and more food, more medical expenses, et cetera. So as we look at this, if the building is in serious problem,